I think so.
Yep, ready to go.
Good evening. Welcome to the Lake Bluff School District 65 Board of Education Regular Meeting. This is January 24th, 2012.
Mary Jane Brady.
Present.
Terry Carney.
Present.
Al Feithhouse.
Present.
Perry Quagener.
Present.
Leanne Charlot.
Mark Berry.
Present.
Susan Reiter.
Present. Thank you.
First order of business is communications from visitors. Do we have any communications or questions?
No, I think we're good to go.
And then I guess we'll go on to reports.
Okay, first report is from the PTO. Kate.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello.
If I can put this where people can see it. So this is the PTO report. We just had our PTO night at the Chicago Wolves last weekend. Very fun. Wolves lost sadly. Also, our spirit wear is offered until March 1st in the web store. That's at lb65.org/PTO. Click on web store. There are items like this shirt and this lovely blanket, things like that. So again, until March 1st, and delivery will be March 20th, there will be spring items that will be offered after spring break. And for the spring items, we are seeking input from the student council at LBMS to hopefully get some items that they would like to see. For enrichment, we just had Jim Gill on January 6th. He did a musical performance for the kindergarteners. We had the Rope Warrior come on January 13th. He was at both schools, and it was also a great kickoff to jump rope for heart, which they're doing at the elementary. January 26th, this Thursday, we have Justin and Liam coming for LBS all grades, and they use music and comedy to teach the kids some lessons and values. And then February 10th, we have the ever-popular Wheel of Wisdom coming back to the middle school, and then in March it'll be at the elementary school. March 10th is our big spring fundraiser, our annual event. Hope everyone can come. The theme this year's Mission Possible, sort of a take on Mission Impossible. It's at Imperial Motors Jaguar. This year, we are going to do electronic invites, so look for those to come home via your computer. We also, last year, for the first year, did display art from all the students, and we're going to do that again this year. The plan is to have some of the middle school art be inspiration for the elementary school artists. So you'll see the original art and then see the elementary school's interpretation of those artworks, plus some other original art from the middle schoolers. And of course, we are always looking for donations for our silent auction, as well as wine for the wine game. News from LBES, kindergarten registration is coming up, and the PTO has put the school kits for the kindergartners available in the web store this year. And by registration for the other grades, their school kits will also be available online. And again, that's lb65.org/PTO. Click on web store. We are getting ready for the Valentine's Day parties at the elementary school. And also, the LBS PTO board is, has voted to pay for the transportation cost to the all-school field trip on March 23rd to help offset some of the costs for that event. At the middle school, the book fair in December went very well. They raised over $1,600, which went to help create the new library resource center that they're working on there. And of course, we are now looking for people to help fill our slate for next year. We have openings in all three boards and would welcome anyone who's interested in joining the PTO. That's it. Thanks.
I have a question. What time is the fundraiser on the 10th?
7:00 PM, till midnight.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is interim superintendent report. Couple of things for the board. We talked today at our administrative meeting, we're going to be having some discussions with police department about engaging in some lockdown drill practices at our two schools. We haven't done that in a long time, and so we discussed about being prepared for that. And so that's something that we're going to be working out. I also met later in the morning with Bill Chapin, who is going to be facilitating at our meeting next month in February, a report on the evaluation that he and some other individuals completed relative to our technology program. And so they're well on their way, and I think you're really going to enjoy that. Little bit of feedback, last Friday was kind of a test for us with the snow and how we did in terms of notification to people. We did discover one glitch, and that is the message that is on the automatic call system was loaded, but it was too short in duration. And so what happened is that if it called a home and nobody answered the phone, it truncated most of the message. And so when the person came home and listened to the message, there wasn't anything there. So we did have people that called the school, called the office, and wanted to know what the call was about. So we will correct that in the future. We've talked to the person who loads the message this year, and she will be doing a different job of loading that message.
Talk slower.
But otherwise, I think we had pretty good, pretty good feedback. I mean, we got the message out in a variety of ways. The bus company did a good job, the staff did a good job, and we got everybody home Also, this week, I met with Jane Salva Delina from the Charm Foundation and found out a little bit more about that organization and what they offer. And I did invite him to make a short presentation to the board, the first board meeting in March, so that the board can have a little bit of additional information about that. The zoning meeting with the village is February 15th, and I mentioned to some of you that we will be on the agenda at that meeting to talk about the modifications to the chiller at the middle school. So we're scheduled for that, and we anticipate that that'll go well. We did have some slight damage to a door in the gym at the elementary school. Jane, anything you want to share about that?
There was some drywall. We had a wheelchair basketball group in there, and there was some, some damage, which I've spoken to three different people with the group today, and they'll be reimbursing the district for the repair cost.
Okay. Also, next month, at our first meeting, we're going to have a short presentation about an outdoor education program at the elementary school. Shelley, anything that you want to add about that, the group that, it's the Echo Club, right? And they have a project that they've spoken to the Alliance about funding, and it's a very interesting program. But I thought before we got too far down the road with it, that the board should be, become aware of what it is. It's really interesting. So they're going to be here to present to you so that you have an awareness of what this looks like, or what it could look like. The last thing I have under my report is, we had some discussion a couple of weeks ago about altering the security at the front entrance to both schools, but one of the schools that we spent a little bit more time talking about was the elementary school. And the practice that we had started the year with was to have the front set of doors, or the outside set of doors, on the east side of that front entrance unlocked, so that anyone coming to the building didn't necessarily have to buzz, they would come in that set of doors and come to the window. But we also discovered that the window that was there was not the original that was installed, and so we had a window that was also open, and that by having both of those conditions go on, that there was a potential breach or change in the security arrangements that the board had been comfortable with when the original installation had occurred. So I spent some time talking to Shelley and Nate about his building, and one of the things that I requested was that the, both sets of doors be locked and that the window be closed at all times. Now, since I did that, I've had the opportunity to go over there, and it is a little bit cumbersome in some situations, and so I thought we could take a couple of minutes here to talk about, you know, why we did what we did, and can we change it another way. One of the things that I might suggest is that perhaps we still leave both sets of doors locked, but that the window is open so that there can be communication. Because one of the things that we noticed is that if we buzz people in after buzzing that first set of doors, and they do come in, and we keep the window locked, there are some times when they're just there to drop something off. And if we keep that window locked, we then have to let them into the, into the school because the drawer won't accommodate a book bag, or boots, or things like that. In addition, with that window always shut, it's difficult for the people on the other side to hear. And so I was...
Do we don't have an intercom or anything like that?
No, no.
There it was. Originally, there was, but it has been relocated, I think, several times.
So I asked Shelley to come because she, you know, she's there every day, except lately when she's seeing her new granddaughter, but...
Congratulations, by the way.
Yeah.
Thanks. Does that look over?
Don't you look happy?
So anyway, you know, I don't know if all of you are familiar with it. Maybe you are. But, you know, my suggestion would be that, you know, we consider going back to, you know, keeping the doors locked, but, but having that window open. That way, you wouldn't have to get a different window. One of the things we did find out in looking into this is that the window that's there currently is not the window you spected and had there when the building was constructed. The last year's administration modified that arrangement and changed out the window. So you now have a different window than what was there.
So what was the rationale? Do we know why that was perceived to be better?
No, I don't know. I wasn't a part of that. But I think the idea was it just made it easier for parents to drop larger items and not have to come all the way into the building and into the office. They could hand it through. I think it's a sliding glass window.
Sliding, I see.
They can drop off snow boots, or coat, or whatever it is, and not have to come all the way in and out.
If the, if the window's unlocked.
Yeah. They can open it, yes.
Just for my own clarification, there's a, there's a window on the outside of both doors? Is that what we're talking about?
No, in the vestibule.
In between, I remember, yeah.
In the vestibule, there's a window into the office.
Mm-hmm.
The transaction drawer underneath.
Right, and that's the door, that's what's been changed?
The window has been changed.
It was a fixed window, now it is an operable window.
But I changed it back for the last few days to a fixed window.
By locking it.
By locking it, and not allowing it to be unlocked.
When the staff buzzes someone in, is there a camera? Can they see who they're buzzing in?
They can, but it's, it's, you know, it's, it's small, it's a small screen at the desk, so it's, you know, you gotta...
So you don't necessarily get a good view of...
You get a view, but not necessarily a good view sometimes. But that's, that's the case at, at almost every school. I don't know of any school that, that has a buzzing system where you get a good picture. All the districts I've been involved in, it's the same kind. I mean, you have a very small screen on that phone, and, and it is what it is. So if you're comfortable, I think what we'll go back to then, Shelley, would be to keep the doors locked, but keep that window open. And that way, people can communicate and drop things off, and you can, you don't have to have everybody go into the school.
Well, I don't know, hopefully I'm not drilling down too much onto the dance floor, but why not just keep the key with somebody inside, and if they need to unlock it to receive a package, they unlock the window, and, or is it not a key kind of window?
I think what they would do, and Shelley, correct me if I'm wrong here, but they're not going to have the window just open, because it's not going to be real warm either. It's going to be shut. When they need to, they slide open. Thank you for dropping Johnny's boots.
So why not, as part of the sliding it open, could they not lock?
I don't know how, I don't know how easily it can lock or not lock. You'll have to go to the mic if you're going to talk to you.
So the window is approximately this width, so half of it is what opens. So it's wide enough to get like a trombone through, but...
But not a baritone.
But not, probably not a baritone. That is correct. And in answer to the question about locking it, the lock is on the outside of the window. It's in the vestibule. I assume that could be changed. I don't know who installed it, but to lock it, you literally, we literally have to go in, out there to lock it, and then come around.
The key's in the gutter, next to it.
Okay, might defeat.
Yeah, never mind.
You know what, though? I'm pretty certain that the lock can be changed. I mean, it's, you, you probably know what the locks look like on glass or trophy cases. I believe that it could be switched around.
Anything can be changed.
I would think so.
That seems to me like a good, a good option. Allow the parents to come into the vestibule. We can see fully who they are, right, through that window, which I thought was the point of it, right? And switch the lock around so we can unlock it to receive...
As necessary.
Sometimes it still maybe won't need to be unlocked. They still could slip sometimes, maybe.
Right, right.
Particularly, like you said, if you can't really see very well who it is coming in the first set of doors.
Yeah, and this was also a very, I think it was a very involved topic during the design stage of the building.
It was.
That's what I understood.
We're weighed in very clearly on that, so there, we need, there needs to be a security environment, as long as it's convenient, so.
Yeah, and right now, with the direction I gave, is that I compromise some in the convenience.
So if we can get that lock turned around, we can get...
It doesn't even need to be a key lock. It's a latch on the inside. It's secure.
That could probably be done as well. But I do think that the lock could be switched.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, that's what we'll look into then.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. And, and, you know, by the way, Shelley needs to be congratulated, and she's leaving now for, back down to see her granddaughter.
Grandson.
Grandson.
Bo Michael, did you read the...
Yeah, I did. Somebody else had a granddaughter today. Anyway, that...
I'm sure so many double names. That's why you know mine was the most beautiful.
Before I screw up anymore, that's the end of my report, so. Ann, anything that you have?
Yeah, I just want to share that the Learning Disability Association of Lake Forest and Lake Bluff has awarded our teachers in both the middle and elementary school grants totaling about $6,200 worth of items they requested through a grant process. And they include things like iPads, social emotional wellness manuals, ball chairs, stand-up desks, reading program materials, software for, for reading, direct instruction programs, and books for children to take home and practice reading with their folks at home. We had the Project Eye to Eye start on Tuesday, January 17th. The program was started by Jonathan Mooney, supported through Brown University, and it provides college student mentors for students with disabilities. The mentors are trained to use an art-based curriculum with individual or group projects with the students to help the students who have disabilities realize their own potential, designed to increase self-esteem, and learn to better self-advocate. So we're two Tuesdays in. On Friday, January 20th, I worked with the folks from Lake Forest 67, and we sponsored a parent informational coffee in the morning. About 30 attendees heard descriptions of how the school supports struggling students, and a description of the process of how we collect data, use data, review it, and monitor student progress to improve student support services. And then I have some information from Joanne on curriculum. She had her first meeting with the full math curriculum committee. They met last Friday. Representatives from each grade level and specialists participated. A review of best practices and common core standards was conducted, and ways to enhance our program were discussed. Tomorrow, during the, we have a half-day staff development time. The enrichment specialists will be trained in Ranzilli Learning. That's an online differentiation program. The foreign language teachers will continue their curriculum review and writing of thematic units with consultant Helena Curtin. And the middle school math teachers will be working with consultant Janice Heigl on methodologies to improve struggling students' math skills. The language arts committee meets this Friday, and will begin the same process as math. They'll review best practices, the common core standards, and ways to enhance the program will be discussed.
And what was the name of the differentiation program that you even mentioned?
Ranzilli.
Ranzilli?
Yes.
And is that elementary or middle?
They're going, the enrichment specialists work in both places, so it'll be carried...
And so they're both, both teams, or...
Yeah.
One main team.
It's one team.
Yeah.
And what's the subject matter of Ranzilli?
Ranzilli is just differentiation for any subject matter, just for all types of learners. They concentrate on the, on the advanced learners, because we have other teams to support the struggling students. But new way of looking at things and learn other practices.
And is Ranzilli a program for the children to use, or is it a program for the teachers to use to help them teach?
Exactly. A program that they learn how to differentiate differently, and, you know...
I mean, there may be applications for the students, but...
But primarily, it's for the teachers to help them differentiate.
We're starting with the teachers, definitely. And we're starting with the enrichment team, and may spread to other teachers.
Last summer, we did some investigation in June in Ranzilli Learning, and many staff at the elementary definitely showed some interest, so we, Joanne wanted to not try too many pilots or start too many things, but this seemed like a, a great time to really do a little bit more investigating and be more thorough, and make a conscious, meaningful, well-thought-out decision.
Joseph Ranzilli is out of Purdue University, and is one of the premier programs for preparation of teachers and the education of gifted and talented students. It's been around for a while, but very, very strong program.
It sounds like we'll be able to leverage the learnings of the enrichment team for the grade level teachers to be able to, to learn from them and use it themselves.
That's exactly the model, exactly.
Great, thanks.
For the enrichment specialists to support the gen N teachers in any way they can, especially here.
Anything else? Okay, next presentation by the board president.
I have just a couple of things. One is congratulations to our middle school pom squad on taking second place at the Lakeside Conference Competition, which we hosted on January 7th. Not only are our team good dancers, but I understand they received many compliments on their sportsmanship and their kindness in hosting, so I think that's something we can be very proud of. And also, thanks to coaches Carly Quick and Allison Fink. I also want to say good luck to the students who are participating in the Lake Bluff Middle School Spelling Bee Finals this Friday. Hopefully, you'll all get words that you know how to spell. Also, the Lake Bluff Middle School Halls are alive with the Sound of Music, which is our spring musical this year, and tryouts are coming to a close, and the crews are all being formed. So good luck to all the students participating, both in singing and acting, and also on, on the light and sound and production crews. Our fifth graders at the elementary school had a fantastic trip to Atwood right after we got back in January. It's something the fifth graders do every year, but this year, for the first time, their principal went along with them, and I understand had a great time, and the teachers enjoyed having her along. So thanks to Shelley, she got out before I got to say that. And then the last thing I was going to say was thank you to the Lake Bluff Elementary classes that participated in the Letters to Troops project. And I understand that Governor Quinn took those letters with him when he traveled to the Middle East just recently and delivered the letters, so thank you.
Very good, okay. First item under new business is demographic study, and in your packet you had a short memo from me that briefly described what we had talked about at our retreat a few weeks ago, that I would encourage the board to engage in and direct the administration to initiate working with, bringing in a demographer to conduct a, a demographic analysis of your student and family population here in the district to provide at least a three-to-five-year, fairly accurate prediction of where your population will be. Do you absolutely have to do this? No, you don't. But I think it's a good tool to have as you begin to analyze your staffing needs in the coming years. And I say that because, you know, you are a district that has, over the last five or six years, continued to diminish in the total number of students that you have, and it'd be nice to have an analysis done by somebody in the field who specializes in that to provide you assistance. Now, I will tell you that over the last few days, I've done some background work, and I did make some contacts, and we have the names of four different firms that specialize in school demographics. One of the firms that many, many districts use across the country is out of North Carolina, a gentleman by the name of John Cossarda. And I did speak to him today. He's with the University of North Carolina, and he actually remembered me, so he said. I, well, I don't know if I believe him, but I mean, that was a few years ago, but... So he's, he's one firm. Another firm was a firm called McKibben Demographics, also, this one out of South Carolina. McKibben Demographics, a number of Lake County districts are currently using them. Gurnee 56 just finished Lake Villa, is using them right now. He has been in, I think, Waukegan. Woodland School District has also used them. Then we have Davis Demographics and Planning and Applied Economics, and they're both out of the Chicago area. In terms of, of cost to the district, we're looking at somewhere right around $4,500 to $4,900, depending upon the firm. Each of them does it slightly differently, but they do provide you a pretty comprehensive report, and they give you different scenarios of projection. Least likely, possible, most likely are some of the terms they use. And they do spend time, and they analyze all components of the population. I think one of the good things you have right now, doing it now, is that they rely heavily on, on the census, and the demographic data of the census, and most of that data is now in from the 2000 census. And so now is a good time to...
2010.
Yeah, what did I say?
2000.
2010 is what I meant to say. Yeah, 2010. So, so it's...
Twice.
So it's, it's, it's better to do it now than in 2015. So anyway, questions from the board. What we would be asking in the action section of the meeting would be simply to direct the administration to initiate this process.
So the question I have been, and I, you and I talked about this earlier, but, so I won't rehash that, but would you get more or additional information other than just shared numbers? Could you be looking at getting information relative to the demographics of the household income levels and so forth, so you sort of understand whether you are, would you need like a English as a second language? Could you get those kinds of, so you sort of understand a mix of students?
Yes, yes.
As opposed to just like it's going to go from 90 to 90, or to 80 or something like that?
No, absolutely, you would get all of that information. In fact...
Going to email it to him right now.
To me?
Yeah.
I don't want that.
We got a sample document, reports from the Davis Group yesterday, showing us what they would show, and all that information was included in the reports. I'll just forward you an email and you can see.
So it's more than just saying...
Snapshot of what they did.
You know, 800 kids in the district, or 750. It's going to, it's by grade, and then by these other levels of demographic cuts.
In fact, I had a discussion Monday with Dr. McKibben, who was up here out of South Carolina, and he was getting ready to go over to Lake Villa, and I happened to somehow end up in a meeting where he had just come from, and so I talked to him a little bit, and one of the things that they're discovering has to do with, you know, the ESL population in a lot of these suburban districts, that that's beginning to curtail. And in other words, the, the younger children coming in, there are fewer kindergarten-age bilingual kids coming into these, these districts, which is contrary to what, you know, some people are perceiving. So, no, they give you complete...
Good.
Any other questions? Okay, next item under new business is lunch program for students. Another item that came up at our retreat was to have some discussion about the possibility of Lake Bluff District 65 engaging in a hot lunch program for students. Currently, you have a type of program at your middle school where there is a hot lunch offered on a daily basis. You currently don't have anything at the elementary school, and we did have some discussion at the last meeting about some of that. I will tell you right now, to make some of you feel better, we did make sure that, we did go out and get food stuff and have it available and store it at the elementary school, and so now students who do come to school without anything to eat have something to eat, and that's been very helpful to them. But this is more about doing a study and analysis of the potential feasibility of offering it and the cost of that. And Jane and I have talked a little bit, and this would be something that Jane would spearhead, and she's had experience in this before, and then bring back a report... back a report to you. So again, what we're looking for in the action section of the meeting would be for the board to authorize us to engage in an analysis of that.
And that's an internal analysis, or with a third party?
No, we.
Just Jane. Do you need a third-party assistance, or no?
Well, I'll need, yes, for some things. The architects are going to help hook me up with a vendor to estimate costs of equipment installation, because that's going to be step number one, is what do we need, or how much will that cost? Then we can look at actual food service vendors and, and say what would be approximate cost for that. So before we even talk to food vendors, we need to see about equipment and installation at both, at both buildings.
How many kids participate in the middle school lunch on a daily basis?
That's a good question, I don't know.
I mean, mostly, just, I don't know how you size a program, let's just sort of know that kind of stuff.
It's varying degrees, I mean, I spent a lot of time last year, it's the cashier over there, and, and some kids, you know, buy milk every day, or milk in a, a granola bar, and some buy their whole lunches, but it's, you're busy the whole time, there's kids streaming through, it's quite a few.
We can get you that answer, I, I don't know, that's, that's a good question. Okay, well, next item under New Business is District 65 Attorney of Record. As we talked before, one of the things that we've had some discussion about is, is perhaps changing the attorney of record for the board, and given that you're going to initiate, actually, the process this evening, in the search for your new superintendent, that it would be advantageous to the board to have an attorney of record that would assist you in, in those contract negotiations with that individual. So one of the things we're going to ask you in the action section is to direct the administration to bring you some firms for the board to interview, and then select from. I mean, I, this isn't something I would do, this is something you would do, because the firm works for the board. Even though the administration probably uses them to get answers to questions, they are, they report to you. And so if you're comfortable, we're going to ask you to direct the administration to initiate that process. Last item under New Business is strategic plan. We also talked about it at our retreat, perhaps of revisiting the strategic plan sometime this spring, and, and to do that, once you've named a new superintendent. And the purpose of doing that is so that you all had a clear roadmap of, of where you want the district ahead in the next three to five years. Not to say you don't have it now, but I think it would be a good idea, once you have a new superintendent, to transition between myself and that person and you, and to firm up some of these things. So we'll, again, request you to direct the administration to initiate that process. And we'd probably look at having somebody help facilitate that process, like on a Friday or Saturday. You don't have to go through the whole detailed procedure that you did before, but, you know, and you might be able to do it in just a day. So, that would conclude New Business, and take us then to Action. So, first item is personnel recommendations, and we need a motion that the board Ed, Board of Ed approves the personnel recommendations as per the attachment.
I move that the Board of Education approves the personnel recommendations as per the attachment.
Second. Any discussion? Vote?
Mary Jane Brady?
Yes.
Terry Carney?
Yes.
Al Fifehouse?
Yes.
Eric Wagner?
Yes.
Mark Berry?
Yes.
Susan Ryder?
Yes.
Next item is approval of contract with school leader solutions. We need a motion that the Board of Education approves a contract with school leader and solutions to employ Joanne Trohanis to provide curriculum and instruction for the 2012-13 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Indicate one point, we had talked about this before, and Joanne has, has come in this year and has done some, some really good things for the district, and has provided attention to some details that you haven't had, and we talked about a smooth transition with the new superintendent to retain this part-time consultative position for next year. Comfortable with that, so that's what this is all about. So, anyway, if there's no other, then we would need a.
Is there, I read the write-up, is there an out in this contract?
Yes.
Okay, so, that gives an individual the superintendent some flexibility.
Yes.
Okay.
And how many days do we expect?
I, it's, it's averaging about three days a week.
That sounds about right.
Yeah, okay.
Eric Wagner?
Yes.
Mark Berry?
Yes.
Susan Ryder?
Yes.
Mary Jane Brady?
Yes.
Terry Carney?
Yes.
Al Fifehouse?
Yes.
Okay, next item is approval of 2012-2013 school calendar. We need a motion for the board to approve the 2012-13 school calendar as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, and, Ann, anything you wanted to comment about this calendar, since?
Oh, it's coordinated with, as best possible with 67 and 1, especially with 115, their starting date is just a little bit different, but the school breaks are the same. And one thing we made a conscious effort to do this year was not have early release on the days that the high school had late starts, because we heard from parents that that was a difficult thing for them to balance both ends of the day, so we tried to avoid that. Hopefully, they won't change their days of late starts, but, thank you.
Okay.
Any other?
Any questions, otherwise, uh, vote please.
Mark Berry?
Yes.
Susan Ryder?
Yes.
Mary Jane Brady?
Yes.
Terry Carney?
Yes.
Al Fifehouse?
Yes.
Eric Wagner?
Yes.
Okay, next item is approval of summer school staff compensation. We need a motion for the board to approve compensation for summer school staff as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Who seconded? Oh, Ellen, oh, I'm sorry.
Record speaker.
Discussion. What I'd like to point out is that one of the things that hasn't happened in, in probably nine years has been to alter the compensation for your summer school staff, and one of the things that I'm a little bit concerned about is being able to have an adequate number of staff, good staff, to, to participate in that program, because I think it's a very quality program from what I've reviewed so far, and so my recommendation would be to just have a slight adjustment, and, you know, the, the adjustment is, is a $2-an-hour adjustment for next school year, or for this school year, I should say, this summer school year, for that program, and, and I think that would be a fair amount, and I think that would, would help the district maintain quality staff for those program offerings, so that was my rationale behind bringing this to your attention.
So by summer school, just to be clear, we're talking about the program that takes place from 9 until 12 in the morning, and we call it kaleidoscope primarily, right?
Yes.
That's what we're referring to?
Yes, that's what we're referring to. Okay.
Terry Carney?
Yes.
Al Fifehouse?
Yes.
Eric Wagner?
Yes.
Mark Berry?
Yes.
Susan Ryder?
Yes.
Mary Jane Brady?
Yes.
Next item is strategic plan. We need a motion for the Board of Ed to direct the administration to initiate the planning to engage in updating the district strategic plan.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. We, I just stated a few minutes ago why I thought we needed to do this, so.
Good reasons.
So, if there's no further discussion, then we need a vote, and, and you could probably just. Yeah, no, you don't need a roll call.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Next item is approval to formally gift the mural to the Lake Bluff Museum of History, and we need a motion for the Board of Ed to approve that the mural from East School be formally gifted to the Lake Bluff Museum of History.
So moved. Museum of History is what we know as the Vleit, Vleit Museum.
Who seconded?
Eric, Eric moved, and I seconded.
Okay, discussion, and then you.
Sorry. I'm sorry.
One thing that I'd like to say is we have a representative here from the Vleit Museum.
Oh, oh, hello.
Would you, would you like to step up to the podium and introduce yourself, Kathy?
My name's Kathy McKechnie, I'm the current president of the Lake Bluff History Museum, actually, and we're just very grateful to the board for your donation of this mural, which is a very important piece of our town's history, and we look forward to working with you to help us raise money in the community so that we can prepare it for display, which may be about $10,000, so we hope we can work together on that, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you for being here, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Need a vote?
Mark Berry?
Yes.
Susan Ryder?
Yes.
Mary Jane Brady?
Yes.
Terry Carney?
Yes.
Al Fifehouse?
Yes.
Eric Wagner?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next item is to direct the administration to investigate lunch program for students. We need a motion for the Board of Ed to direct the administration to investigate a lunch program for students.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I have an answer to Terry's question about how many kids participate, and according to Mr. Blackmer, a quarter to a third of the student body on a daily basis, an average.
Okay, thanks. Wow, thank you.
I agree with you, Mark, when you're cashing, it seems like a lot more.
Yeah, never ends.
They're going back for seconds.
Especially in middle school.
Okay.
They purchase one item at a time.
They keep coming back for more. Any other discussion? If not, we would need a, simply a voice vote on this.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Okay, next item is attorney of record, need a motion for the Board of Ed to direct the administration to set up presentations by various school legal firms for consideration for a new legal counsel of record.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Okay, again, I think that just a voice vote would suffice to direct us to get started.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, next item is possible action as a result of close, there isn't any that we have, and so that takes us to the consent agenda. We need a motion to approve the following items on the consent agenda. Regular meeting minutes, December 13, 2011. Committee of the whole meeting minutes, January 10, 2012. Closed session meeting minutes, December 13, 2011. Destruction of closed session tapes for June 22, 2010. P-card report, bills payable. Treasures report, activity reports.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Not need a roll call vote?
Terry Carney?
Yes.
Mary Jane Brady?
Yes.
Susan Ryder?
Yes.
Mark Berry?
Yes.
Eric Wagner?
Yes.
Al Fifehouse?
Yes.
Okay, it takes us down to old business, we do not have any items under old business. Items after old business is the need to go back into closed session to discuss superintendent search with search firm representatives. You can take that motion now, but I don't see the representatives here, so if you want to just take a break.
So, should just move into closed, no, ask everybody else to leave then, all right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you can move right into closed session and then take your break then, you want to do it that way?
Yeah, why don't we, so, could I, could I have a motion that we move into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Al, can we have a roll call?
Mary Jane Brady?
Yes.
Terry Carney?
Yes.
Al Fifehouse?
Yes.
Eric Wagner?
Yes.
Mark Berry?
Yes.
Susan Ryder?
Yes.
Okay, and we'll just take a short break.